Good morning, everyone. It is 10 o'clock. We will call this special call meeting on July 15th. The purpose of this meeting is to conduct the hearing as required by the City of Goldsboro Code of Ethics. I do want to take a minute and just give everyone a little bit of background on how we're here and maybe a few rules. So sometime back in late October timeframe, Acting City Manager Randy Guthrie believed he needed outside, independent help in investigating claims between Councilmember Williams and Community Development's Chaco Carter Simpson. So he engaged the services of the forest firm, Ms. Valerie Bateman, and Mr. Carl Dean to help investigate the claim. On April 1, 2019, they presented their report to the City Council in closed session. On May 9, 2019, the City Council voted to censure Councilmember Williams based on the report and other factors in order to protect the city as the report recommended. And in the early June timeframe, the council and Ms. Carter both agreed to make the redacted report public for transparency reasons. So I want everybody to know that we are operating the censure hearings under GS 160A-80 and the City's Code of Ordinances and the Censor Hearing Resolution, Procedure Resolution. And one of the requirements is that we have this hearing today, so that's why we're here today, where both sides will present their evidence. At the conclusion of this hearing, if there is a proper made motion and second to censure Councilmember Williams based on breaking specific subsections of our Code of Ordinances and the Code of Ethics and voted affirmed by at least five councilmembers, we will adopt the resolution censure, which will be placed as a matter of record in the minutes of the official City Council meeting. If there are not five votes to adopt the censure, the matter will be concluded with no censure. The resolution, in our operating sense, the mayor conducts the hearing, but in an effort to be impartial as well as help keep decorum and hopefully keep the meeting moving along, the council has decided to hire retired Judge David Leach, Judge Leach, to conduct and lead the hearing. An alternative to him in just a minute. I do want to reiterate, this is not a court hearing, and rules that apply in court may not apply here, but proper decorum is expected. I also want to mention this time, we welcome all visitors, and that's as you said, good behavior and respect for the chamber and withhold any outbursts, et cetera. If the judge believes that someone's being out of order, he can certainly ask you to leave. I am going to turn it over to Judge Leach in just a minute, but I do want to kind of explain the order and the process that we're going to do to conduct the hearing. After he introduces himself and makes any of his comments, then Councilmember Williams will have the opportunity to make an opening statement, should he want to do that. The clerk will have to swear on all witnesses. The council will present their witnesses first, and any council member is free to ask questions or cross-examine any witness at the appropriate time. Once council evidence is complete and testimony is complete, Councilmember Williams will then present his witnesses and his evidence. After all witnesses have testified and all evidence presented, councilmembers will make any closing statement he has, and then the council will begin deliberations in open session. And that's kind of the decorum of what we're going to do. So I'm going to turn it over to Judge Leach to make any comments he has and start the process.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me introduce myself briefly. My name is David Leach. I'm a retired District Court Judge. I've spent my career in Greenville. I was a District Court Judge for 28 years there. Chief District Court Judge in that judicial district from 1999 until I retired a couple years ago. I've held court in a number of counties, including Wayne County, but most of my judicial career was spent in Greenville. Now, I do some fill-in work as an emergency District Court Judge, and I'm happy to be here to try to help folks conduct a civil hearing. The -- we'll start now, and we'll go until 1:00. If it turns out that we're not done, then we'll take a break for lunch. But the procedure now, which I'll follow, allows for the council member, Mr. Williams, to make an opening statement if he so desires.
Thank you, Your Honor. My name is Mario White. I'm representing Councilmember Williams in this proceeding. I would probably start by saying that I think we'd probably make a motion to dismiss the proceedings. I'm not sure how this proceeding can proceed because the council members would probably be potential witnesses, in my opinion, in this proceeding, that we would intend to call as witnesses in this proceeding. So I'm not sure how they could sit in judgment of Mr. Williams when they're potential witnesses. Let me explain to you where I'm coming from. If you look at the ordinance 31.20, subsection A says, "The City Council may direct the City Attorney to investigate any apparent violation of this subchapter as it applies to any member of the City Council." So first of all, there has to be an apparent violation. Somebody has to make an allegation of an apparent violation. I would assume, because I don't know, because I've not seen anything, that that would come from one of the City Council. I don't know who made the allegation of apparent violation to get the investigation started. So before you can conduct an investigation, you have to have an alleged apparent violation. We have not been provided any evidence of any report of any apparent alleged violation before the investigation was done. I think they put the cart before the horse, is what I can see here, because you did an investigation, and now you're saying he violated these ethics or standards of ethics or Code of Ethics. I think you put the cart before the horse. So in order for the court or this council to have jurisdiction, you have to have that alleged apparent violation. And I think we would have to, I would have to question the City Councilmen or members as to who made that allegation and what the alleged apparent violation was before we can even get started. The other issue is, is the City Council was provided an investigation report that was done by, I think, Ms. Bateman. They were briefed on that report. They've had an opportunity to review the report. I don't know how many have actually reviewed it, but they've had an opportunity to review that report. There were things said in that report by witnesses who may or may not come into court and testify today. We've issued several subpoenas, and I've been told that some of the people who were subpoenaed to be here to testify have been told they didn't have to show up for this hearing. Now, the council has already seen those statements of witnesses, and we won't have the opportunity to cross-examine those witnesses at this hearing today because they're not here. And so the council, in my opinion, will be biased going in because they've seen this information, and we don't have the opportunity to dispute it. So I don't know how the council can sit in judgment. I don't know how the council can try this case with that information. I think it's a violation of Mr. Williams' due process rights, his equal protection rights, and it's not, the council can't be fair and impartial in this matter. And so my first position would be to make a motion to have this thing dismissed because I think the council and the mayor as well are all potential witnesses in this case. And so I don't know how you can sit in judgment and be a witness in the case at the same time. This is probably one of the worst cases I've ever seen as far as due process in my 25 years of practice. You have the, in essence, the jury sitting in judgment of this man who've already seen the reports and what witnesses are going to say, who aren't going to be here to testify. That's troubling. That is troubling to no end from my perspective as an attorney who has done this for 25-plus years. And there's no way he can have a fair hearing in front of this council and proceed. So my motion, first of all, would be to dismiss this proceeding.
City Attorney, will you respond?
Since the council itself is going to have to have the censure proceedings themselves, I think a council member would have to make a motion to be seconded and take it on.
One, I don't remember us agreeing or making the decision to have this investigation even started. We went back and we listened to the minutes, and nowhere in that did we say that we were going to start this investigation. At one point, I was told that the investigation was started because Ms. Carter filed a complaint downtown against Mr. Williams. Then that story changed. So it's been a lot of different things go on from now until then. That was, you know, I can't actually say that I have proof of that, but I know what I was told, because it's kind of sort of hearsay, even though it was directly out of a person's mouth, but that person changed their story later on. So we come to an investigation that should have never even taken place because that's a council we never, ever agreed to. So I would, I'm with the attorney and Mr. Williams on. I would make a motion to have his case dismissed.
Second.
This is a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those who favor, raise your right hand. Opposed likewise. Motion fails.
All right. Will, now, is that the conclusion of the opening statement?
It's not, Judge. If I can go on the record and say that's, this is exactly, my point exactly. He can't get a fair hearing in front of this council. This is my point exactly. How is the council going to vote on that motion when I just laid out the bias of the How can a council now vote on that motion or make that motion and vote on that motion when I just laid out the bias of the council? This is a violation of due process. This is a violation of this man's rights. He will not get a fair hearing, and we've just seen that by this vote. I don't understand it. I'm not understanding. This is my point exactly. This, in my opinion, if it's allowed to proceed in this manner, is nothing more than a high-tech lynch.
Okay. Folks, now, we're going to have a civil hearing. No outbursts either, no outbursts either way.
Well, I mean, I'm going on, I mean, still, what the attorney just said.
No, 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 no. We're at opening statement is where we are.
I can't get to the, I'm sorry.
Whether you've finished the opening statement.
I can't get to the opening statement, Judge, because it's biased. It's biased.
Okay.
It's biased. And I would think that the court can rule on that.
I'm here simply to conduct the hearing. I don't have authority as a judicial official to make rulings.
I'm not sure.
I mean, if you're here just to conduct the hearing, I'm still a little confused on here.
I'm here to conduct the hearing. Okay. So now, if you're done with opening statement, and I understand that you, I understand that you disagree with having the hearing. If that's the end of the opening statement, then we'll go to evidence. Mr. Williams will get a chance to present his side as well.
So nobody have any issue with the council sitting in judgment with their witnesses in this case?
This is the procedure that's adopted for the City of Goldsboro. It's not a judicial proceeding.
When was this procedure adopted?
Well, that's the next question. Councilman Foster, I'm glad you brought that up. That's the next question was, this procedure was adopted, so I don't know if it would apply to Mr. Williams' case or not, because this procedure was adopted after these allegations were made. So expost factos says that you can apply to his situation.
Okay. All right. We'll now begin with presentation of evidence for the council.
Our first and only witnesses is Ms. Valerie Bateman. Ms. Bateman? And Melissa, you'll need to swear her oath, please.
Ms. Bateman, I guess our question to you would be, you did the report, you came to the City in closed session to present the report. You really were never given a chance to do that. As briefly as you can, maybe you want to summarize how you got to where you got, you and Mr. Dean, and then I'm sure people have questions.
Judge, first of all, I object to her testimony. I don't think she's firsthand knowledge of anything. I think she may have interviewed witnesses unless those witnesses are here to testify. Anything she says is hearsay. So we don't get, again, this is the violation. We don't get to cross-examine the witnesses against them.
Her entire report was hearsay.
You'll get a chance to ask her questions after her direct testimony.
I mean, but you come on.
After her direct testimony.
But now you're being biased as a, if you're going to conduct this hearing, now you're being biased.
One at a time.
But no, he's being biased now, time, time. You're being biased right now as you are conducting this hearing. Come on, if you're going to do it, do it the right way.
One at a time.
You said as a judge for years, you know the right way to do this and the wrong way to do this.
One at a time.
I'm talking right now, and so it is one at a time. So you be quiet and answer my question.
You will get a chance to ask her questions.
I'm asking you a question.
Okay. Questions from the City.
This is ridiculous. You just walked out the back with them. I guess y'all had your conversations, so now you're going to come out here and do it directly what they tell you to do. Come on, man. It's ridiculous.
You can do exactly what they're telling you to do.
Questions from Ms. Bateman.
This is ridiculous.
Your Honor, I'm aware, I believe.
Folks, we need to, folks, they're going to get it, folks.
Eager, please have the court, we're going to ask you to leave. If anybody outbursts, ask them to leave, please.
This is ridiculous, man. We've got two officers here that need to be out in the streets protecting our citizens, but we in here with this mess. Look at the money being wasted. Y'all should be ashamed of yourselves, remember?
One at a time. Okay, Ms. Bateman.
I just want to make sure that my remarks are able to be recorded for use in any subsequent appeal. So am I speaking, is the microphone just picking it up? Okay. All right. That's all I want, I just wanted to make sure I'm adequately recorded. Good morning. Thank you for having me here today. I am happy to be back in front of you again. I wouldn't say happy, actually. I am back here in front of you again. I'm going to be presenting highlights today from the investigation undertaken by myself and my co-investigator, Mr. Dean, which you all, I think, had the pleasure to meet back when I came here before. As you know, this investigation began back in October of 2018. I would just like to say as an initial matter that Mr. Dean is very sorry not to be here. He has been delayed in Houston. His wife is receiving medical treatment down there, and he would have been here if that were not the case. He sends his sincere regrets and hopes that I will be able to adequately convey the substance of our investigation. As charged by the City, we undertook two investigations, one made by a City employee into allegations that Councilmember Williams had created a hostile work environment, and a second investigation into allegations by Councilmember Williams that that same City employee had engaged in misconduct, which warranted that employee's dismissal. Now, we undertook this investigation based on our combined experience of many years. Mr. Dean has over 20-plus years as a human resources professional, and he has worked with local governments and state government agencies, as well as universities, in running HR systems and implementing them. I have 25-plus years of employment litigation experience with public agencies and entities such as universities, state agencies, individuals working for those who have been sued or defending lawsuits. So we, our experience informed our investigation. Now, this investigation will not consist of me giving any firsthand direct testimony about things that Mr. Williams did or said. It is based on interviews, though, with Mr. Williams, as well as with other employees of the City, as well as with citizens of the City of Goldsboro. We had intended to investigate these allegations separately, but were required to combine them when both parties informed that the investigation was not simply about what occurred on September 27th, 2018, and October 1st, 2018, but actually was informed from their perspectives by events that had been ongoing since February 2017. I'm not sure a chronological summary would be helpful at this point. What I will do is talk about the specific nature of the allegations made by each party, and then, to the extent that it's helpful, I will be happy to run through the evidences we found it. Our goal was to ascertain the answers to these two questions, whether there was misconduct and whether Councilmember Williams had created a hostile work environment. It became clear to us eventually that the employee had not engaged in misconduct and Councilmember Williams had engaged in actions which could, in fact, be found by a reasonable person, a judge, a jury, to constitute a hostile work environment. Councilmember Williams' allegations were that the employee had engaged in a conspiracy to ruin his reputation by making false allegations against him in a closed-session meeting of the Goldsboro-Wayne Transportation Authority meeting. In the last paragraph of the written letter that he submitted, he asked the City to terminate the employee.
I'm sorry, who was that you said, who was that?
Councilmember Williams. That was his allegation. We were unable to substantiate that any false statements were made during that meeting or that the employee engaged in any misconduct. We interviewed Councilmember Williams multiple times and requested documentations for the names of other witnesses that might support his allegations, that this conspiracy existed, and we were never given any names of individuals to follow up and interview or provided any documentation that we could review. The employee's allegations alleged that Councilmember Williams engaged in behavior towards the employee that the employee considered to be a personal attack, as well as demeaning and threatening. And the first incident occurred on September 27th at the same meeting that Councilmember Williams complained about. Again, a GWTA authority meeting in the closed session. The evidence showed that this behavior, that Councilmember Williams' behavior at this meeting was so extreme and unacceptable that on the day of the same meeting, the Chair of that committee felt compelled to send a letter to the interim City Manager, and that letter requested that Councilmember Williams be replaced on the GWTA board because he had, quote, verbally attacked the employee while the employee was presenting at the meeting. The letter further described Councilmember Williams' actions as a temper tantrum and, quote, "not only offensive to the employee, but also disrespectful to the other board members who were present." Finally, the letter noted that Councilmember Williams was the City Council representative on the board and stated that the City Council Member, that City Councilmember Williams had done the council a disservice. After this meeting, the investigation showed that another meeting took place after the City Council meeting on October 1st. There was a closed session at this meeting on October 1st, but the investigation never showed any reason that that was, that anything occurred at that meeting, and so the investigation, we did not, we were not prompted to ask for the closed session minutes of that meeting. So the investigation does not recount what happened in that meeting, and it's not privy to what happened at that meeting. Nevertheless, after that meeting, the investigation showed that Mayor Allen met with the employee, a concerned community member, the interim City Manager, and the Chair of the Committee who wrote the letter about the meeting on September 27th. By the accounts of all of the individuals who were in that meeting, the purpose of the discussion was to consider whether action to address Councilmember Williams' behavior at the 27th meeting, at the meeting on the 27th, which had been observed by multiple individuals, whether any action taken with regard to that conduct could be postponed until he rotated off that board in December. However, at some point while that meeting was going on, Councilmember Williams and his girlfriend slash business partner, Mrs. Moore, entered the mayor's office and interrupting the meeting and explaining his presence by saying that he had returned to the building to check his mail after the meeting. He expressed anger that the meeting was going on and suggested that the meeting had an improper purpose. By all accounts except Councilmember Williams, Mayor Allen then attempted to defuse Councilmember Williams' anger by asking him to participate in a discussion which would settle the matter between him and the employee. And he also clarified that he was, as mayor, entitled to meet with anyone he wanted to meet with. The mayor asked the employee if the employee would be willing to meet with Councilmember Williams. The employee indicated that the employee be willing to do so, depending upon the advice of the employee's lawyer. Councilmember Williams then alleged that the employee was threatening to sue him and sue the City, and the meeting eventually ended with no resolution and no meeting scheduled. On October 2nd, the next day, the employee submitted a memo to the interim City Manager, formally complaining about Councilmember Williams' actions at both the September 27th meeting and the October 1st meeting, and the employee made allegations of discrimination and a hostile work environment. I would note at this point that the employee, the investigation showed that the employee actually first made allegations about a hostile work environment against Councilmember Williams to her supervisor, the former town manager, back in 2017. And in fact, in response to her complaints, then, the manager then consulted the then-City Attorney, who sent a letter to all of the council members cautioning them about their behavior as members of the City Council, cautioning them not to engage in actions which could be perceived as creating a hostile work environment, and asking them, you know, to remain as professional as possible in their dealings with City employees. So the September 27th incidents and the October 1st incidents were the latest manifestations of what this employee believed was the creation and exacerbation of a hostile work environment. The investigation found that the series of events which occurred between February 2017 and culminated with the events of September 27th and October 1st could be found to be evidence that the employee was subjected to a hostile work environment, and also that those actions could be deemed to be evidence that Councilmember Williams has engaged in retaliation towards the employee. I have another 10 pages of factual summary, which I will be happy to get to, but I would like, at this point, to stop and say, on October 15th, the council took the action of removing Councilmember Williams from the GWTA Committee. And I believe, as an experienced employment litigator, that had all, if there was no other evidence of a hostile work environment retaliation after that action, that action would perhaps have been sufficient to provide the City with a defense in a Title VII lawsuit, that it took, you know, sufficient action to protect the employee from a hostile work environment. However, the continued, to the extent that there has been continued hostile workplace, hostile workplace and retaliation by a member of this City Council against an employee of the City, the City has become vulnerable to a Title VII lawsuit against the City for failing to take action to protect the employee. The censure action that you're considering would signify that the City has taken actions to stop the hostile work environment and retaliation. However, if the censure action is not sufficient, then, at that point, the City would have a defense, and Councilmember Williams would himself in risk being sued in his individual capacity under the Civil Rights Statute 42 U.S.C. 1983 for violating the employee's civil rights in her, in his individual capacity. Of course, it is my fervent wish that none of that happens, but that is beyond my control and probably the council's as well. So I'm happy to take questions, and I'm happy to go back through the facts, the salient facts from the investigation, which provide specific examples of conduct that a court could find to be examples of a hostile work environment and retaliation.
Any other questions?
Ms. Bateman, I have a question. Would you restate the period of time, starting in February, was it 2017?
2017.
And what was the ending date?
Well...
For that specific?
February 2017, there were a number of events that occurred over time, but the, in June, the perception of a hostile work environment became so severe that the employee compl- June, the perception of a hostile work environment became so severe that the employee complained to then, the manager then, Scott Stevens, who then talked to Mr. Wumble about drafting the letter.
But earlier you said that certain actions that occurred between February...
February, and I, our investigation focused on at the end, September, September 27th and October 1st of 2018.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry, I feel like I'm not answering your question.
Well...
Are you trying to get something, and I'm...
Well, you couched the term before, I believe, in that these certain actions that occurred between this period, beginning time and then ending time, would produce a hostile work environment.
Well, the hostile work environment, the employee could contend, and I believe a court could find, that the hostile work environment began in February 2017, and I don't know if it's ended today.
But for the purpose of your investigation?
But from the point of my investigation, we ended with the October 15th meeting where the council voted to remove...
2018.
2018, yes, I'm sorry, 2018.
Okay, any other questions?
This is the least of the things, what we were trying to do, according to what you're saying by censure, is we were trying to clear ourselves of the responsibilities of being sued by the employee, is that correct?
Well, without giving you legal advice, which you really should get from your attorney, I would say that a censure motion indicates the city council's disapproval of the actions engaged in by Councilmember Williams with regard to the employee who's made the allegations. And so, a court, a judge, a jury would look at that and take that as some evidence that the city council attempted to stop that behavior, and attempted to protect the employee.
And had we not, we were leaving ourselves up for a lawsuit.
You may still get sued.
Exactly. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Mr. White, cross-examination.
Ms. Bateman, you were hired by the city, I guess by the city council to conduct this investigation?
Well, I was, I've been paid by the city, I'm sure the city council oversees the budget used to pay my bill, I was in contact with the city attorney.
How much were you paid to conduct this investigation?
To cut, to conduct the investigation itself, I think it's a matter of public record that my firm was paid $1,500.
So, how long did this investigation go on?
Oh, my goodness, well, I think, as you can tell, it's, the final report, I think, was provided sometime before I appeared, before the city council in closed session.
So, roughly, how many months did this go on?
Well, math is not my forte, but November, December, January, February, when did I appear in front of the city council?
April.
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 So, the investigation actually concluded, it's, when the report was left in its last draft form. I would not say any investigation went on between that last draft form and the presentation.
And about, approximately, I don't have that exact number, how many hours did you spend in, in this investigation?
I probably averaged about minimum wage.
That doesn't tell me much, how many hours?
Well, I have, I, I did not track those hours, because it was a flat fee arrangement. But if you just count the time I spent on investigations, I believe that summarized in the report, and you could, you could do the math.
I, I can't do the math, because it may take me a month doing a, a report like this, where it may take you two weeks to do one.
I can assure you it did not take two weeks.
Well, that's what I'm asking about, how many hours did it take you in this investigation and doing this report?
I can't answer that question.
This is a pretty lengthy report, and that's why I'm kind of curious.
I think I said I can't answer that question.
And so, you mean, your firm only made $1,500 in expending 47-page report, plus your investigation, your time?
Pardon me, what was the question?
Your firm only made $1,500, and you've done a 47-page report, and interviewed, I don't know how many witnesses, and according to you have done an addendum, 10-page report, and you were only paid $1,500?
Well, it is a little embarrassing, I agree.
Very embarrassing, Ms. Bateman. Ms. Bateman, you're an experienced litigator, that's what I heard you say, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
You're an experienced litigator.
I am an experienced litigator.
You've litigated cases before, based on that information, I would assume?
Before, I'm sorry?
I mean, you've litigated cases before?
Yes.
Okay. Have you ever had a time where you were in a hearing, and you didn't get the opportunity to cross-examine any witnesses against your client?
Well, this is not that kind of hearing, and due process for this kind of hearing is completely different from due process in the hearings in which I tried cases.
What kind of hearing is this?
My understanding is this is a censure hearing, a hearing on a censure motion.
So, in a censure hearing, you're telling me that Mr. Councilman Williams shouldn't get the opportunity to cross-examine the witnesses against him?
I am not telling you anything of the kind.
Well, you said this is a different type of hearing, so what's the difference in the hearing?
You said, have I ever litigated cases during which the witnesses did not have, the parties did not have an opportunity to cross-examine? I said, in my cases, that's a requirement of due process, that is not a requirement of due process, as I understand it in censure hearings.
What is due process? Is due process not the same as a censure hearing, as it is any type of hearing? Is there a different kind of due process?
There are many kinds of due process, there's post-deprivation due process, there's pre-deprivation due process, there's substantive due process, there's procedural due process. If you've litigated constitutional due process claims like I have, you know, the Supreme Court has written tones on the nature of due process and what's required in any particular situation.
Does due process not require the opportunity to cross-examine the witnesses against you?
Not in every situation.
You mean to tell me, there's a hearing where a witness can say something, and I don't get the opportunity to cross-examine that witness?
I don't, I'm not a law professor, I don't want to lecture you on the law, but yes, that's what I'm telling you.
I'm not actually lecturing on the law, I'm asking you from, based on your experience as a litigator.
No, you're asking me the law, you're asking me whether due process as a legal requirement requires the opportunity to confront witnesses. I'm telling you, due process is different in different situations.
Is that not an aspect of due process?
In some cases.
So, it's not, it's not in all cases?
I, I, I am not aware that this hearing is being conducted outside the requirements of due process. As far as I know, it is. But again, that's not my role here, that's something that, it's your job to argue on behalf of your client.
Well, let me ask you this, Ms. Bateman, your report and your opinions are based on your belief in what a witness told you, is that correct?
That is true.
And so, if the witness lied to you, then that make your report flawed, is that correct?
I will say, over time, the credibility of the relative witnesses became very clear to Mr. Dean and myself, because we got the same story from multiple people, and we got different stories from Councilmember Williams.
But those multiple people aren't here for us to cross-examine today. And so, if a witness lied to you, your report is potentially flawed. Crap out, crap in, I mean crap in, crap out, is that right? So, if there's, you're getting bad information in your investigation, does that not flaw your opinion and your report?
I would, I would have to tell you this, that I stand by everything in that investigation.
And so, if a witness lied to you, does that not flaw your opinion and your report?
Absolutely, absolutely, if Councilmember Williams lied to me, that would be...
If he lied to, again, he was a witness you interviewed, if he lied to you, that flaws your report.
It flaws, it flaws the...
That's my question, that's my question. And so, you're basically just taking people at their word, and we don't get the opportunity to question that.
Well, in my investigation, I weighed the evidence.
Thank you, Ms. Bateman, thank, thank you, Ms. Bateman, I appreciate it.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes, during your investigation, I, I read your report.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna have to ask you to speak back.
During your investigation, I read your report, and it seems like you had everything that was, that would agree with what Chaco was saying, everything, everything in your report would agree with what she was saying. And during that report, I didn't see anything that Councilman Williams said in your report. So, if you're investigating two people, why was nothing in that 47-page report from Mr. Williams? It seemed to...
I will tell you that, that Mr. Dean and I asked, interviewed Councilmember Williams multiple times, many more times than we interviewed anyone else, in a desperate attempt to get any evidence that would support any of his allegations. We asked him for names of people, places, dates, documents, we essentially begged him for those things, and none were forthcoming. The employee, on the other hand, kept copious notes and detailed summaries of all of the events that occurred to her, making her this city's nightmare and a nightmare, and a litigation.
But once again, you did 47 pages, but not one thing in those 47 pages was anything Councilman Williams said. If you're going off of what you just said with, you're taking everybody at their word, I'm just saying, if you're taking everybody at their word, and everybody's truthful, why, nothing in that 47-page report was anything Councilman Williams said? I sat with you for three hours, and not one thing was said in that report that I said. Now, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go a step further.
Let's let her answer that.
I mean, she's not, it's not a question, I didn't ask the question, I didn't ask the question, I was making a statement, it's a difference. Now, going on to the next thing, dang, I almost lost my train of thought, man, you throw me off, but, let me see, let me get back to, with that and them 47 pages, nothing that I said was in there either. Now, I, I could say, just, just from, from my, from my reading the report, there was things said about me several times in that report that I know was not the truth, I know this for a fact, but you took it as being the truth and put it in your report, why I don't know. I mean, it was in this, I mean, just, I'm gonna use this as an example, say the lady, Ms. Shirley Edwards helped me during the election, I've never received any help from that lady at any point, at any time in my life, for no reason. But this is in your report as being the truth. So, I'm, I'm gonna finish, I'm gonna give you time to speak. So, going back to what, Mr. Wright, what's your attorney name?
Wright.
White, I'm sorry, what he said, how, how can you say that the things that you were told were the truth, when they weren't? You, I mean, you, nobody was sworn in, there was no, there was no official anything, it's just a bunch of hearsay. The entire 47 pages was hearsay, hearsay. No matter how much, I can write something down on a piece of paper and say, this happened on this date, doesn't mean it happened on that date, it's no factual information of that, that's still, that's my hearsay on a piece of paper. And that's what you're saying, Ms. Chaco Carter Simpson did. Just 'cause she wrote it down doesn't mean anything, just 'cause she put a date beside it, doesn't mean anything.
I'd be happy to respond to your points when you're ready.
Okay, be great.
Okay, the three hours that Carl Dean and I sat with you during the investigation, I don't believe that you shared any light on the interactions between the employee and Councilmember Williams. You did indicate to us that you were not going to defend the behavior of someone who made bad decisions, while not specifically saying that you thought Councilmember Williams had made bad decisions. You did not at any point tell us that you did not have a relationship with Shirley Edwards, we did not ask you that. The evidence based on your being helped by Ms. Edwards was based on multiple witness statements who said that she campaigned for the slate of council members that were elected in the fall of 2016. Regardless, that fact is not relevant to whether Councilmember Williams created a hostile work environment or retaliated against the employee.
True, it's that, so why was it even in your report? Now, and to be, and to be right, I'm not gonna stand with anybody if they're doing the wrong thing, just, that's, that's a fact. So, with that being said, it shouldn't have been in your report, 'cause it had nothing to do with it. Second, secondly, you're saying that, that, that I didn't, I didn't say anything according to what was going on? If, if, if I'm saying that I did not see at any point where Councilman Williams personally attacked her, did anything to her that warranted this investigation, or any censure, or anything, what else, what else am I supposed to do?
I, I'm not, I have no answer for you for that.
Okay, I'm just checking, I mean, because you said, you said that...
You have to act as you see, as a council member.
Okay.
Are you finished?
So, I mean, once again, like I said, 47 pages, not one thing from me, not one thing from Councilman Williams, I don't know who else you might have interviewed, if Councilman Williams might have had you...
Mr. Your Honor, your lord.
So, I, I mean, that seems to be a little bit biased, and, and when you do an entire investigation, when you're paid by the city, so it's almost like you did the investigation for Ms. Chaco Carter Simpson, but not the investigation for the council, which, who you say hired you. I, I mean, I'm, I'm kinda confused on why, how could you just do a one-sided investigation?
It's, our opinion that the investigation is not one-sided, we invest, we interviewed Councilmember Williams multiple times, many of the things that we questioned him about, he actually agreed with the facts. He agreed that he was angry with the employee, he agreed that he believed the employee had engaged in a conspiracy, he believed that the employee was making statements about him and the community that were negative, he believed that she had engaged in misconduct. However, we were never able to get any evidence of that.
But, but none of, but, none of that's in your report?
I'm sorry, were you finished?
Yes.
Okay, none of that's in your report, but then, what, I haven't seen any evidence of anything that Ms. Carter did that was any evidence up to this point, zero.
I'd be happy to go through this report.
I mean, no, I wanna see the actual evidence that you saw. I, I don't wanna go through your report, because we already know your report is biased. So, I wanna see the, the exact investigation evidence that you had, it's like, I'm found in emotional discovery. I wanna see all the evidence that you have that, that says that everything that you wrote in that report is true, not hearsay, because even just asking people is hearsay, you know what I'm saying? At the end of the day, you have to have some solid evidence on someone to prove, to prove them guilty. So, but it's all seemed to be hearsay, even if you interviewed somebody, it's still hearsay.
The binder for that investigation is three to four inches tall, and the exhibits which are attached to it, which support the statements made in the investigation, are at least 80% of that binder, the evidence is in that binder.
So, where, where is that binder at? I, I mean, I would like to see it, I think that we, we are entitled to see it, we, I've never seen it.
Why go to the address, it's been released?
It's been released, why, why don't we get it, like, we got everything else then? I mean, how hard is it scanning it in, I don't care how many pages it is, I mean, we should be entitled to that.
How much of the evidence would you like for me to go over?
I don't want you to go over any of it, I just wanna see it for myself, I would like to have my hands on it. So, can, can we get the copy in it, printing it, doing whatever we have to do?
That is not, if you have questions for me, I'm happy to answer them.
No, no, I'm not asking, I'm not asking another question.
That's something you need to take up with...
I mean, I'm just saying that, I mean, if we can get the investigation that you did, I would like to get the, all the factual information together.
That finishes questions?
Yes, I'm fine.
Okay, anyone else, questions of Ms. Bateman?
I have some follow-up questions, if anybody else doesn't have any questions. I would like to ask a couple more questions, if I could. Ms. Bateman, I'm just quickly going through the report on some...
I'm sorry, you're gonna have to speak up a little bit.
I'm sorry, I'm quickly going through the report on some notes I'd made, and it's unfortunate, I won't be able to ask the people that you interviewed, because they're not here, but there are some things here that trouble me, in, on page 17, last paragraph, there's a comment that the plan director indicated Councilman, Councilman Williams dealt with her in a demeaning and authoritative tone.
I'm sorry, could you let me get to page 17?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
It said that, she said that he, he dealt with her in a demeaning and authoritative tone, that's a legal conclusion, can you tell what the facts are, that, that, that what he said that was demeaning, and what do you mean by an authoritative tone?
That is evidence that would come out in a hearing, you put, you could anticipate with that evidence is that the employee would take the stand and would say, this is what happened at that meeting.
Okay.
And the employee would testify, here is how I felt about it. Now, in, in a lot of litigation, I will tell you this, how someone feels about something is not necessarily relevant, it is completely relevant in a Title VII lawsuit, because how the alleged perpetrator's actions made the employee feel is exactly what the court is looking at, the judge or the jury. And so, although it's held to a reasonable person's standard, the court wants to know, how did that comment, how did that, how did that person's demeanor make you feel? I'm not here to prove, and my report was not intended to prove, that the behavior was objectively anything. The purpose of the investigation was to inform the city council what kind of evidence could be expected to come out at a, in a court hearing, at a litigation, a trial, at which the city was being accused of failing to protect an employee from a hostile work environment. This description of how the employee felt would be relevant to that and that alone.
I guess my question is, maybe you didn't understand my question. This individual says, he spoke... says he spoke with her in a demeaning and authoritative tone. Now, so many people might walk out of here today and say, "Mr. White was being aggressive with Ms. Bateman." What does that mean, "I was being aggressive"? Because I was being loud? Because I was being what? Tell me what the facts are that says he was demeaning?
That's for a judge or jury in a Title VII hearing to determine.
But in this hearing, I'm sorry, Ms. Bateman, let me, let me, let me, let me stop you. In this hearing, I have this report that I'm going by. You submitted this report to this council with a legal conclusion and no fact to support it. How do I know what behavior he did that was demeaning, based on this description right here?
I think a better question might be to ask, "How does the city council know who to believe in this recitation of the facts?" And the city council has had multiple years of interactions with Councilmember Williams and multiple, multiple years of interactions with the employee. And the council member can do, can draw conclusions about the veracity and the credibility of each party, just as a judge or jury can, and just as anyone can. So, whether, whether Councilman Williams actually spoke in a mean or demeaning tone to an objective person is the question for a fact finder. It's not necessarily a question for you and I today.
Well, thank you, Ms., Ms. Bateman. That's my point exactly. For a fact finder, there has to be a fact for the fact finder to find, and not a legal conclusion. This is a legal conclusion. What's the fact for the fact finders to find that he demeaned anybody?
The fact is that the employee felt demeaned.
And what fact did the employee tell you that he did to demean her?
"I felt demeaned."
We're not gonna get anywhere with that, Ms. Bateman. Let's move on.
Bugs, need to hold it down.
Um, another one on page twenty-nine, last paragraph, you said, "Councilmember William," I mean, "Councilmember Williams then became very defensive and stated that he left his home all the time." What was, how was he defensive? What are the facts that would support whoever said this, that he was being defensive?
Again, that was the employee's description and, as well as the, uh, description. I, I don't believe that the letter used the word defensive. I think the letter just focused on the fact that the comments made at that meeting were, uh...
So, your, your report says he became defensive. So, I'm reading from your report.
Yes, but that is the description I was given by the employee.
And so, what did he do to become defensive?
Well, Councilmember Williams also indicated that he felt attacked at the meeting.
Okay.
And from that, one could surmise that Councilmember Williams felt defensive.
Okay. But what are the facts-
He did not disagree that he was on the defensive.
Well, what are the facts that he gave you that he felt defensive?
Again, he said, "I felt defensive. I felt, I felt attacked."
If a client comes in for a discrimination lawsuit and says, "I've been discriminated against," do you file a lawsuit basically just saying, "I've been discriminated against", or do you allege facts in your complaint, saying that, "This is how my client was discriminated against"?
Yes, and the facts are, I'd be glad to go through those with you if you'd like.
I'm, I'm just asking about, you know, in this paragraph, I mean, I don't wanna go through the whole report. I'm just asking about, you know, these particular words, because they seem to me to be legal conclusions that, that were drawn by you, um, or by whoever it was, without any fact to support it.
I'm sorry you see it that way.
Well, that's the nature of this business. We, we on two separate sides, you and I. And so, you see it one way, because you were paid, and I'm seeing it one way, because I was paid.
No one was paying me to see it a certain way. I went into the, I went into the investigation with a completely open mind, as did Mr. Dean, and we went to extraordinary lengths to find any evidence to support Councilmember Williams' allegations.
And, and you said that, you said that the council has dealt with Mr. Williams for years. Has the council ever filed any complaints against Mr. Williams for his behavior?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that, please?
Has the council, to your knowledge, in your investigation, filed any complaints against Mr. Williams about his, any behavior of Mr. Williams?
Has the council found-
Have they ever filed any complaints about Mr. Williams' behavior?
I don't have any idea.
And tell me, um, in, on page thirty-three, I'm just kinda hitting and missing right now, because I don't, can't go through this whole entire thing. You said that, um, Mr. Hardison described Councilman, Councilman Williams' actions as a temper tantrum. What, what was the, was he doing to, that was a temper tantrum?
You'll have to ask Mr. Hardison that.
Unfortunately, Mr. Hardison's not here. I can't ask him. That's why I'm asking you.
Mr. Hardison's letter speaks for itself, then.
No, it doesn't, Ms. Bateman. I, I, you know, I have kids, and my kids throw a temper tantrum, they roll all on the floor. Was Mr. Williams rolling all on the floor?
Mr. Hardison described his behavior as a temper tantrum.
And you didn't ask Mr. Hardison what he meant by that?
I would have loved to have asked Mr. Hardison, but he was not made available to me for interviewing.
So, you took what was said in that letter, and you stuck it in here without even interviewing Mr. Hardison?
I could not interview Mr. Hardison. He was not made available to me by his attorney.
Crap in, crap out.
That is your opinion.
Ms. Bateman, I don't have any other questions. I, we're not getting where.
Any other counsel? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bateman. You can step in.
Judge, is this okay?
I have a question.
Okay. So, I'm sorry. Did you want to ask Ms.?
No, 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 no.
No, I had a question. Um, can somebody please explain why there, 'cause I, I don't think the crowd or, or the two council members, Councilman Foster or Councilman Williams, even know, know why the, uh, people or-
You, you said Mr. White?
Yes, sir.
Why, um, these, uh, individuals were even not allowed, or they said that if they weren't allowed, or they were, they're not here to be called as witnesses. Can, can somebody please explain that, Mr. Lawrence?
Okay. We'll, we'll get to that when we get to Mr. Williams' presentation of evidence.
That's fine. That's fine. I, I just wanted to know.
Sure. Okay.
And I don't have any, uh, thank you very much. Am I excused? Yes.
Now, any one object to Ms. Bateman being excused? Okay, thank you. Okay. Any further witnesses for the council?
Yes, no, sir.
Okay. Um, any witnesses for Mr. Williams?
I'd like about a ten-minute recess, so I can speak with my client before we put on evidence, if that would be okay with the council.
Counsel, okay with that? Okay. We'll take ten minutes here. Go.
No, sir, I'm not.
It's not one thing in there, in the first seventy-five percent of it, about this case. It's about summer youth jobs, all of that stuff. It's nothing in that investigation report about it. I mean, seventy, I went through seventy-five percent of it just that quick. And it's applications, all the process, the numbers, this, that, the third, has nothing to do with facts that, that, that she stated in her report. I just went through seventy-five percent of it.
Mr. Foster, that would surprise me, Mr. Foster.
This is, this is ridiculous.
All right. Would now resume for hearing. No other witnesses for the council. Okay. And Mr. White, any witnesses for-
We call Councilman Julie A. Cup.
All right. Raise your right hand.
No. I have to be sworn in, right?
I have to be sworn in, right?
Okay.
Can you sit down where you want me to stand? However, however the council wants to do it.
Uh, y'all, nah, I think, okay.
State your name, please, sir.
Gene Aicop.
Mr. Aicop, how long have you been a city council member?
Uh, seven years.
Seven years. Are you familiar with this, with this process that we have going on here against Councilmember, Councilmember Williams?
I'm, I'm, what?
Are you familiar, you familiar with this process and what it take, what is taking place in this process?
And my, I've never seen it before, no.
Okay. Well, let me ask you this. Do you know when a complaint was filed against Mr. Williams?
I don't know when, Miss, could Miss Simpson-Carter was the one who filed the complaint?
Have you seen a copy of that complaint?
Have I personally seen it?
Yes, sir. Have you requested a copy of that complaint?
No.
Now, um, do you recall whether there was a vote at any city council member meeting to initiate this investigation based on a complaint filed by Miss Carter?
No.
Um, and Mr. Aicop, do you know how much Miss Bateman was paid, um, to conduct the investigation?
She says fifteen hundred dollars. I know that's what we voted on.
If I told you that, um, Councilman Williams has an invoice showing five thousand dollars, would that surprise you? It wouldn't surprise you?
It would surprise me.
It would surprise you?
Yeah.
I don't have anything further.
Any other council members? Okay, you can resume your seat.
Judge, we'll call, um, I'm sorry, if it's my turn still, I'm sorry. Councilmember David Hamm. State your name, please, sir.
David Hamm.
Um, Mr. Hamm, how long have you been a council member?
Since, uh, January of twenty sixteen.
January twenty sixteen. And are you familiar with any complaints that was filed against Mr. Williams by anyone to initiate this process?
No.
So have you seen a complaint filed by Miss Carter?
No.
Have you requested a complaint filed by Miss Carter?
No.
So, at any time did the board vote or the council vote to initiate this investigation?
We discussed it. I don't know that we, um, voted to.
So do you know what it was that initiated this investigation?
Well, like I said, we discussed some of the actions that, uh, were ongoing, complaints that, uh, were alleged. But I, I recalled that we actually voted to undertake that investigation.
And you never requested a copy of any written complaint filed by anyone against Mr. Williams?
No.
Do you know whether or not, in any meeting, whether any of the other council members requested a copy of any complaint filed by Mr. Williams?
No, I do not.
Did you file any complaints against Mr. Williams?
No.
Hang on one second, please. Um, I don't have any further questions.
Any council member have any questions? Okay. Any further?
I, I, I will call Councilmember Bevan Foster. State your name, please, sir.
Bevan Foster.
Mr. Foster, um, how long have you been a city council member?
Three years now.
Um, and, um, this process that we're going through today, have, have you seen any complaints, um, or any complaints filed with you to begin this process against Councilmember Williams?
No, sir.
Have, have you requested a copy of any complaint?
No, sir.
Anybody present you with a copy of complaint?
No, sir.
Was there any discussion, any city council member meeting about, um, what complaint was filed to initiate an investigation of Councilmember Williams?
Um, not a com- well, I, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say yes to that. And I'm gonna say that, um, like I said initially, when I was told, I was told that, um, the investigation started from the, uh, actual, um, paperwork filed downtown on Councilmember Williams. That's, that's what I was told. But now official complaint here? No, sir.
So, so, so they're told there was paperwork that was filed downtown, but not any complaint that was lodged with the city council?
No, sir.
Um, at any time did anybody ask about, about sending a complaint?
Uh, I don't think nobody asked about the actual complaint. Um, I, I asked about how it actually started, how the investigation started. I was told that Mr. Guthrie, um, this acting city manager at the time, took it upon himself to do it once the complaint, once the paperwork was filed downtown. That's when the investigation started.
And let me sure understand this correctly, 'cause I'm reading the ordinance, and I wanna make sure I understand, is, is to start an investigation, is that something that the city council's supposed to vote on to start an investigation? So was there ever a vote?
No, sir.
There was never a vote to start the investigation? I, I, I don't have any further questions.
Any council member have any questions for Mr. Foster? Okay. Mr. Foster, you can resume your seat.
I would call, um, Councilmember Bill Broadway, kinda getting out of order. Um, state your name, please, sir.
Uh, Bill Broadway.
Mr. Broadway, how long have you been a council member?
Seven years.
Seven years. Um, and in your seven years, have you ever seen a process like this go, go forward?
We've never had anything like this before.
I, I've never seen anything like this before, Mr. Broadway. Um, were you ever given a copy of a complaint that was filed against Councilmember Williams?
No.
So was there ever any discussion at any city council meeting that you were, um, attended? Um, was there any complaint ever discussed at any meeting?
No.
Did you ever ask for a copy of a complaint?
No.
Did the board ever vote to initiate an investigation against Mr. Williams?
No.
Did you ever file a complaint against Councilmember Williams?
Say that again.
Have you ever filed a complaint against Councilmember Williams?
No.
And you attended meetings with Councilmember Williams on a number of occasions, I would imagine?
Yes.
I don't have any further questions, Mr. Broadway. Thank you.
Any council member have questions for Mr. Broadway? Okay, you can resume your seat.
I will call City Councilmember Mark Stevens. Can you state your name, please, sir?
Mark Stevens.
Um, Mr. Stevens, how long have you been a council member?
For the last three and a half years now. Uh, we got sworn in January sixteen, uh, twenty sixteen.
Have you ever seen a proceeding like this?
I've never even heard of one, anything like this, in all days of my life.
Um, Mr. Williams, I mean, I'm sorry, Mr. Stevens, um, have you ever had opportunity to review or had a complaint read to you that was filed against Councilmember Williams?
No, um, the only thing I can go and say is that, uh, the first thing goes back to what Councilman Foster was saying. Um, first time we ever heard of anything going on was during the supposed restraining order hearing at the courthouse between, um, Councilmember Williams and Miss Chaco Simpson-Carter.
And do you know the outcome of that hearing?
All I know is that it was, the paperwork was filed wrong, 'cause it was told at a council member, or a council meeting, and that the, however it was, the paperwork was filed wrong and that she was denied a restraining order.
So the judge, as a dismissed, as far as you know, the judge dismissed that proceeding, is that correct?
Yes, I do. That, yes, yes, I, from hearing what, at the council meeting, I did hear that. Yes, I did.
So did there ever, was there ever any discussion at any council meeting that you attended about any complaint that was filed with the city council or the city manager, um, against Councilmember Williams?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Do you recall any vote at any city council meeting to initiate this investigation against Councilmember Williams?
No, and I don't believe that I was ever, uh, attended any meeting for a vote. 'Cause I, at, at that time, I guess at the time when they were saying all this was going on in October, when he was removed from GWTA, uh, commission and everything, I was out of town 'cause I was, like, fleeing supposed, the hurricane at the time. So I, I don't remember being, uh, at any vote.
Okay. I, I don't have any further questions, Mr. Stevens. Thank you very much.
Any questions by a council member of Mr. Stevens?
We would call, um, Mayor Chuck Allen.
Yes, sir.
State your name, please, sir.
Chuck Allen.
Um, Mr. Allen, how, how long have you been mayor?
Four, this is going on my fourth year.
Fourth year. Um, and I, and I'm assuming that you attend these council meetings, is that correct?
Correct.
Were you ever given a copy of any complaint filed with you or the city council against Councilman Williams?
Uh, no, it was not.
You were not. Um, do you know what, now, there was a vote ever put forward to start an, initiate an investigation against Councilmember Williams?
We had a closed session meeting, and we're, at the end of the closed session meeting, council members came in, accused Miss Carter and stuff. There was back and forth between the council during the closed session meeting. At the end of the closed session meeting, I asked the, the, the acting city manager Randy Guthrie and the attorney Ron Lawrence if they would investigate the matter and come back.
Okay. But was there a complaint initiated?
There was a complaint initiated at that time. But we wouldn't see the complaint, 'cause it's, it's confidential to the employee, so we wouldn't have seen it anyway.
Who initiated the complaint?
Well, Miss Carter, I'm sure.
Have you seen the complaint she initiated?
I just said we wouldn't see it, because it's confidential to the city. I mean, it's, it's an employee-employer thing. We wouldn't see it. But I'm sure the complaint's there.
So nobody seen a copy complaint, uh, or you've not seen a copy complaint? Do you know when the complaint was filed?
Probably on or about the first of October. I don't know the exact date now, but I have it. But it's the first of, sometime the first of October.
Okay. I, I'm looking at your, you, you're familiar with your, your, the Goldsboro ordinances, or you're not?
I am. Well, sometimes.
I, I'll take that. Um, section thirty-one point twenty, subsection D. I'm gonna read it to you, 'cause I don't know if you have a copy of it. And those who have a copy can read along, make sure I'm not saying anything incorrect. "Any person who believes a violation," and I'm going based on this subsection, because you're telling me that Miss Carter filed a complaint. "Any person who believes that a violation of this subchapter has occurred may file a complaint in writing with the city council when the mayor, a member of the city council, city manager, city attorney, or a member of any citizen board or commission is the subject of the complaint." So there would've, that wouldn't be confidential with it, because it would be filed with the city council, the mayor, or city attorney?
You, I don't, I can't answer if it's confidential or not. I mean, I, I'll, I believe anything between an employee is confidential, but you can ask the city attorney if he can answer that, 'cause I don't know.
But a complaint is not between an employee and employer, because Mr. Williams is not employed, Miss-
The complaint was between Mr. Williams, the council member, and Mr. Lawrence. If it's confidential or not, I mean, in the city, I'm sorry. If it's confidential or not confidential, I don't know. You, I, I told you what I believe.
You said, I'm sorry, maybe, maybe I'm, we're misunderstanding one another. You said the complaint was between Councilmember Williams and, and Attorney Lawrence?
No, no. I said that she filed a complaint against Councilmember Williams. That's what I said. And what I said is I believe anything she filed at the time would have been confidential, is my belief. And he can tell me I'm right or wrong, 'cause I don't, I'm not sure.
And, and you're assuming that she filed one, because you've not seen one?
No, I've got a report that says she's filed, she filed one. I've seen it. I've not seen, I've not seen what she filed. I've seen when she filed it, the date.
And so you're basically taking this report at face value?
Nothing to do with that report. I've got another piece of paper internal to the city that says when she filed it, when he's done stuff, when who's done what. Just kind of a summary of events.
Who, who gave you that?
Uh, I think maybe the city attorney or city clerk. I'm not, or, I don't know who gave me that, who gave me that. I think the whole council's had that.
I've not seen that. I don't know if any of the council, other council members seen that. I, I, I've not seen that.
Me neither.
Okay. Um, let, let me ask you this. Let me move on. Let me move on. Let me move on. Um... Were you present, um, when, um, or at the hearing, um, Miss Carter had, when she filed a fifty C complaint in court, in district court?
I was not.
You were not? Um, and so you were not there. You didn't, you didn't testify out on her behalf of anything?
I did not.
And you've been present in, in, in city council meetings with Councilman Williams?
I have.
Have you ever filed a complaint against him?
I have not.
I, I don't have any further questions.
Any questions?
I have a question. Um, Mr. White asked you, um, how, about the investigation and when it started. You said that you told Ron Lawrence and Randy Guthrie to start the investigation, correct?
No, I, I said at the closed session of the council meeting, when we had the conversation, Councilmember Williams came in and said what he said. I said, well, how about Mr. Lawrence, you and Ron, you and Randy look at and investigate the claims of Councilmember Williams? And, and by that time, I think Miss Carter had filed that same day or day before her complaint. So, so we asked them to look at it.
I'm just making sure that you said that you did that, and it wasn't voted on by the council to do it?
No, it wasn't voted on. No.
Anything else? Okay.
Judge, we will call, um, Mr. Vadia Moore. Ms. Moore, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Um, can you tell us your relationship to Mr. Williams? You two are-
Business partner, and he's my fiance.
Okay. Um, and were you interviewed by Miss Bateman during this investigation process?
I was, on multiple occasions.
Do you call, how many times you interviewed by Miss Bateman?
Um, I believe it's three.
And did you provide information or answer questions that she asked you?
Yes, I did. I provided supporting documents. Um, I also talked to her in detail on a number of issues.
And you said you talked about three times. About how long was each one of those interviews?
Uh, really long. I think I tally that I probably talked with her for between fifteen and twenty hours with the completion of all of our time sitting together.
And have you had an opportunity to review this report that she, that she prepared?
I have. I, I found it. Um, I looked at it from, I think it was sent to the newspaper.
And, um, have you seen anything in that report where you discussed with Miss Bateman that you thought was relevant to this, 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 these issues?
Uh, that was something that I was really shocked about, because nothing that I said, um, or whatever evidence that I presented to her was in that report. It's almost as if she just wasted my time. It seemed like she had pretty much already formulated her own opinion. Um, my first meeting with her was an unofficial meeting. Um, she was due to meet with Mr. Williams. He canceled, 'cause he had another appointment. On his way to the appointment, um, her, Miss Bateman, along with Mr. Paul Dean, bust into my ice cream shop. He explained to her that, you know, I'd already said that I'm not able to meet with you, but she pretty much demanded to speak with him, um, and she also demanded to speak with me. At the time, I asked her what was the nature of her visit, and she said, she was a little confused. Um, she said she had been hired by the city to invest- said she had been hired by the city to investigate, um, Ms. Carter's complaint. And I asked her, well, what about Mr. Williams' complaint? She says, oh, no, I'm not here for that. I don't even know anything about Mr. Williams' complaint.
So Mr. Williams filed a complaint against Ms. Carter as well, is that correct?
That is correct. I was with him, um, when he spoke with, um, Mr., the interim city manager at the time, Randy, um, and he initiated his complaint on September twenty-eighth. Um, after we, I was at the meeting where we caught Mayor Allen, Shirley Edwards, Freeman Hardison, and Chaco Simpson Carter, um, and they were basically plotting against him. And we went the next day to meet with Mr. Guthrie and explain to him what we had pretty much just witnessed. And so he filed another complaint. In addition to his complaint about September twenty-seventh, he now added October first for what he had been doing.
And you were present when she interviewed Councilmember Williams?
I was.
Okay. And so she, she, she interviewed him as well? He spoke with her as well?
Yes, and what was kind of disturbing to me about that, like I said, um, to me, and I've dealt with a number of attorneys, um, just from previous jobs that I've had in law offices, and she seemed to always lead. You know, Councilman Williams, um, I'm sure you scared everyone when you raise your voice, and everything was leading, like she was trying to get him to admit to something that he knew he had not done. Um, in our first initial meeting, she did in fact say, her and Carl Dean said that there was no hostile work environment because Mr. Williams does not have the power to hire or fire Ms. Carter.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Ms. Moore. I don't have any further questions. I appreciate it. Council may have some questions.
Any council member, mayor?
I have, I have two questions, Ms. Moore. First off, when you were in, when you and Councilmember Williams had come in my office that night, do you remember me asking Councilmember Williams to come in and engage in the conversation? Because sometimes communications helps things. Maybe we could just sit down and talk to it. Do you remember that invitation?
Well, you did that after some discussions. He came in and he said this was improper, you guys meeting together. You stated then that you were discussing with her what you guys had just talked about in closed session.
No, I didn't state that. But, but then, so on this other side of that, do you also remember me saying to Councilmember Williams that this is gonna get uglier if we can't figure out a way to resolve it? Would you please come in and meet with us tomorrow? Bring, bring you, bring Ms. Edwards, whoever we need to bring?
Well, no, that's not exactly what you said. What you said, you, you did say come in, which was after some discussion, um, and with you having that discussion, he said to you, well, it's kind of late for us to do that. You should have had me here in the beginning if you were discussing things with me.
We have a distinct difference on what.
Well, no, I have the audio, sir, if you'd like to hear it.
One, one at a time. Okay.
All right, good. Thank you.
That, any other council member? Okay.
Thank you.
Um, we call Kiana Reed. Ms. Reed? I just got a couple of questions for you, Ms. Reed. You were present when Ms. Bateman interviewed Ms. Moore and Councilmember Williams, is that correct?
Yes.
Were, were you ever interviewed, asked any questions?
No.
Um, was Councilmember Williams and Ms. Moore forthcoming and their information given to Ms. Bateman?
Absolutely. Um, Ms. Bateman, she was surprised. Like, she acted like she didn't really know anything, you know, what was going on in the situation. Um, Mr. Williams and Ms. Moore were explaining everything that was going on and she, she was appalled. She didn't have any information, so, um, they were giving her documents and she was taking a document, oh, can I make a copy of this? Can I make a copy of that? Um, Ms. Chaco Simpson, Simpson hasn't told me anything about this, or the city hasn't provided me any information about that. Um, her and the gentleman that was with her, they act like they were, you're just surprised about the whole situation, what was going on.
All right. Thank you, Ms. I'm sorry, one second. Thank you, Ms. Reed. I appreciate that. I don't know if they have any questions for you now.
Any questions from any council member for Ms. Reed? Okay, thank you, Ms. Reed.
I think I'll be short for Councilmember Williams.
Okay. Any further, uh, witness for the council?
That's all.
Okay. Um, at this point, Mr. Williams has an opportunity to make a closing statement.
Judge, as I said, uh, in my opening statement, um, I don't know how this hearing can proceed, and I've seen how it has proceeded now, and I still in disagreement with it at this point. I, I, I agree and go back to, I think it's just nothing more than a high-tech lynching, is what I say. Um, you know, we have members of the council gonna now go in and vote whether or not to censor Councilmember Williams, um, on actions and allegations of people who have not even come to this hearing to even testify. Ms. Carter, who, I don't know if she filed a complaint or not, nobody's seen the complaint, nobody's even heard the complaint, uh, but has made allegations against Councilmember Williams, and she's not even here to testify against Mr. Williams. We could have disputed a lot of things that she said in this report, but have not been given the opportunity to do that. Uh, Ms. Bateman talked about due process. I've been doing it twenty-five years. And due process for me means being able to confront and cross-examine my accusers. And if I can't do that, then you violated my due process and my equal protection rights. We've had Ms. Bateman come here and talk about her report, and there are things in her report that are questionable, but we can't question them because the people who told her aren't here. There are legal conclusions in this report, um, claiming he was defensive, claiming he, he, um, his demeanor was, um, was aggressive, um, his demeanor and, uh, was demeaning and authoritative. Uh, what do those things mean? Where are the facts to support those things? And this council gonna go in and will probably vote to censor Mr. Williams, which is gonna be a travesty and an injustice if it does happen. Uh, but these are things that have been alleged against this man, and this man doesn't have the right to cross-examine and confront his accusers. It's an injustice. It's an absolute injustice, and the citizens of Goldsboro should be upset.
Yeah.
I, I gotta, I have a, I have, I'll read this. I have a model code of ethics for North Carolina local affect elected officials, and I'll just read this, just one little paragraph. Um, it talks about, um, suggested guidelines for a board to follow if it decides to include a sensor proceeding in its code. However, a strong caution is in order. Boards should consider carefully the implications for community and board trust and for accused members' reputation before including such a procedure in the code or before beginning sensor proceedings in particular cases. If this sensor proceeding goes forward and this man is censored, there's no trust in the community for this council. No trust in the community for this council. I've sat here and I've shown, I've shown how they violate their own procedure, and they sat here on the very beginning and voted against me, and I've shown how you violate your own procedure. Where's the trust if this goes forward? It's Councilmember Williams today. It could be anyone of you tomorrow. It's disheartening. Twenty-five years of legal experience I have, I've never seen anything as big a mess as this. I got an article in the newspaper yesterday. I don't know who sent it, but this is the kind of thing that's been going on in this case. I just wanna read this article in the newspaper, and this is, this, this is my concern. Last paragraph of the article bases, I won't even go through the, the other, other part of it. Counsel could ask the city attorney to seek local legislation to offer a recall election or even have, or even remove Williams from office by a motion proceeding according to city council. So this man is jeopardized and run the risk of being removed from this seat and has not had opportunity to, to, to cross-examine witnesses against him. Tell me how that's not an injustice. I've asked every council member about the complaint, and none of them have seen the complaint, but yet they're moving forward with this process. I've asked every council member, was there a vote to start this investigation? And every one of them said no, but yet we're moving forward this process in violation of your own ordinance and your own procedure. Somebody should be upset other than me.
We are. They're totally upset.
Somebody should see the injustice in this other than me. I've wrestled with this case since Mr. Williams has contacted me. And from the very beginning, I said, tell me what the complaint is. Provide me a copy of the complaint because that's how this process is supposed to start, with the filing of a complaint. You can't drag me in any, any hearing or any court proceeding without a filing of complaint against me and tell me what I'm accused of. What is he accused of? I don't know yet. I have issue with it. Serious issue with it, and if he's censored, it shouldn't stop here. My plan is to take it to, in front of a superior court judge, because I don't think he'd get any justice in front of this city council. They can't be fair. They can't be impartial. They're biased. They've read this report, and none of them have questioned these witnesses. They've taken Ms. Bateman at her, at her, at her word. I've never had a hearing where we don't cross-examine witnesses against my clients. I'm sick. I'm sick. I'm sick to the pit of my stomach with this hearing. And if it proceeds, the council should be ashamed. The council should be ashamed. I'm sorry. Maybe I'm aggressive, but I'm sick to the pit of my stomach. As an African-American man, it can happen to me. And I don't get, I don't get the opportunity to cross-examine my accusers. I've been doing criminal law for twenty-five years. I've never seen it before in my life. I've been doing administrative hearings for twenty-five years. I've never seen anything like this before in my life. And if that's the case, why are we even having a hearing?
No need.
Why are we even having a hearing? Let the council go in, 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 in closed session and vote to censor him. Because this has been a kangaroo court. They called one witness, and that's Ms. Bateman, who doesn't even have any firsthand knowledge of what went on. I'm sick. I'm sick. And the sooner I get this over and get out of Goldsboro, the better off I'll be because I'm sick. And I hope, I wish the room had been filled with citizens of, 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 of Goldsboro because the citizens of Goldsboro should be sick. How can you trust your council if this is allowed to go? If this was going forward with the council, how can the citizens trust their council? Mr. Lawrence and I have had a lot of discussion about this. The citizens of Goldsboro aren't even being considered in this process. That's who you gentlemen represent up here, the citizens of Goldsboro, and this is tearing your city apart. I'm done. I'm done. But I would hope that the board would not censor based on what's been presented today. How can the board censor based on what's been presented today? How can the board even vote if there are witnesses that testified at this hearing today? As I said, it's Mr. Williams today. One of you may be calling me next week. Sitting in Mr. Williams' chair. I would hope not, but one of you very well could be. Thank you.
Under the, um, rules governing the hearings, this concludes the hearing. Now, I will defer back to the mayor.
Uh, I think two things. First of all, whether Councilmember Williams is, I just wanna correct one thing that, that Mr. White said. Whether Councilmember Williams is or isn't censored, we'll know shortly, I guess. But I do want to be sure that everybody knows there is no, I have heard not one conversation from any council member with anything to remove Councilmember Williams from office. Nobody's discussed that up here. It has been mentioned in the paper where there are ways to do that, but that has not been a conversation, and there is no discussion about any way, shape, or form trying to remove him from office. So I do just wanna clarify that because that's an emotional issue. We all know there's an election coming up in November, and we certainly respect the rights of the people in District One to pick who their representative is. So I just wanna clarify that there's no, no issue there.
Ms. Mayor, if I may comment to that, I'm sorry, if I may comment that. There may not be now, but what's to stop this council from doing it at a later date if he is censored?
Well, it'd be a whole nother process, a whole nother hearing, and there wouldn't even be enough time to do it between now and an election, so it's not, it's not an issue.
It is, it's an issue for him, though it is. It's an issue for, it's an issue for me as well.
All right. So at this time, we will start conversations on, from the board.
I'm gonna start off, um, fair and impartial manner. Um, as Mr. White said, it's impossible for us to do that at this point. Um, and we also owe our constituents an obligation to be ethical and to do the right thing. Uh, at this point, with, with the evidence, with, with the investigation, everything has been given to us. I don't even know who's seen the so-called invest, um, so-called investigation, um, report. Um, what she said was facts. I don't know who, who's actually looked at that, but it's not one thing in there within the first seventy-five percent that I saw that had anything to do with this case. So while she was saying it's over eight hundred pages or whatever, it had nothing to do with this case. It was about summer youth jobs and, um, what else? Uh, some Wayne Community College stuff and, and this, that, and the third. It had nothing to do with GWTA board. It had nothing to do with this investigation. Um, so it's, it's sad that we would even sit here and be wasting citizens' time, wasting citizens' money, everything within this. I, I don't know how much we're paying the judge to be here. Um, we're finding out that we paid Ms. Bateman more than fifteen hundred dollars. So all this has went on to, for what? Even at the end of the day with a censorship, um, according to what I've been reading with school of government, it, it almost means nothing. Now, I mean, you can come back later on with some things, but it's, it's just sad that we wasted all this time trying to censor Mr. Williams when it's, it's, one, he didn't do anything to be censored, but then, two, that we're not gonna get anything out of him. Absolutely nothing. Nothing will come out of censoring him. Nothing. He can still say what he wants to say. He can still do what he wants to do. I mean, nothing comes out of it. I mean, there, there are times that people censor right in the middle of a council meeting because somebody says something somebody else don't like. We're gonna vote censor him. Ah, they keep moving. We, we went through this whole entire process, this whole entire investigation for what? Now, you say to protect the, the city from, from Ms., from Ms., from Ms. Chaco Carter Simpson suing. She can still sue us. Now, what we don't know is what we, what we put in place is that Mr. Williams can also sue us as well.
That's right.
And that's even more important right now at this point, you know? But this is what this, this, this council has decided to do. So I just say I'm, I'm with Mr. Right, White, that, I mean, things should still just be dismissed, be done with, and we all move on.
Any other council members have a comment?
The only thing I can say to you is that from the beginning, and before this even, this proceeding even started, um, I was at the beginning of June, and you were saying it was gonna be held sometime in June, and I specifically said I wasn't gonna be here. I told everyone that my intention was not to continue sitting on the city council of Goldsboro mainly because for the last three and a half years, it's been nothing but a fight. We have not done anything positive for the citizens of Goldsboro. Um, however, you wanna say whoever the parties are, whether, you know, I'm not gonna get into that, but whoever the parties may be, we just haven't done anything positive for the city of Goldsboro. I called Ron Lawrence while I was away in Florida, begged him to talk to, um, Councilmember, Council, um, White over here, Councilman White, Antonio's attorney, begged him to, not to proceed with this hearing and not to even go with this because it was going to be ridiculous and it not, it, it just wasn't needed. I begged him. I don't know if Mr. Ross talked, talked with you, Mr. White, and you guys were gonna try to come to some kind of conclusion.
We did.
We did not have to come to this.
We did. We, we tried.
I, I specifically did not want this to go down. I didn't, I, I foresaw this being nothing but a total farce. Um, now we have a situation where, I guess you've got, as, as far as I know, or however Councilman Foster is saying, Councilman- Councilman Williams might have a potential loss if they censor him, or the council censors him. And then now you also have another loss, you have two potential losses. You have Chaco Simpson Carter and you have Councilmember Williams if the censor goes through. I, this is, these are the reasons, there are several other reasons, but this is one of the main reasons why I'm like, you know what? It's better to go back to doing what I was doing, which was filmed and everything, than stay up here and then continue with this craziness. Because it's nothing but craziness and it's been that way for three and a half years. So I don't, I don't, me myself personally, I don't care what goes on. I, I'm gonna say it's just gonna come down to a vote. I don't, me myself, I don't even wanna vote. I just, I'm just like, just let it go ahead and just get it done and get a vote for it. Because it should have been, like, it should have went and did what, from the very beginning what I said. It should have been yourself, Mr. White, and a judge in the courthouse of Wayne County that's over on Williams Street and Walnut Street. It should have never came to the city council. The mayor, myself, and the rest of the other council members should have never had to be a jury or called as witnesses for something of this nature. It was between two people, Ms. Carter and Mr. Williams. And it should have never came to the city council. Because we're not doing right now anything for the city of Goldsboro. We're not doing a thing for people in District One, for people of District Two, people of District Three, people of District Four, and people of District Five and Six. We're not doing anything for them. We're wasting time, taxpayer money, and everything else. So truthfully, let's just go to the closed session, however it's gonna go, and just move forward. Because this should not be going place with the city council. It should be in front of a court of law and you should be actually facing a full judge that is in office right now and you guys should be having actual witnesses and subpoenas that are going between two people, not the city council. And may I ask who that is?
It doesn't even matter.
Knock, 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 knock.
I was just about to say.
I didn't vote for anything, my hand did not go up. 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 My hand did not go up and it will not go up. It has not gone up. No, it did not.
Okay.
Please, 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 y'all, please, please. I'd like to say something. There are no winners today. Today will be a day that will always be a reminder of what should have happened. How could both sides have handled this situation differently? Was it all worth the pain? Did the outcome of this situation outweigh the needs of the people? Did hate, jealousy, and envy play a role within this situation? I will always reflect on this day. There are no winners, only losers. There have been many sleepless nights, much pain and suffering. Our community must trust all our leaders. Our community must trust all our city employees. My stance has never changed. I was elected to stand with the people of District One, to bring transparency. I have been honest throughout this employee's allegations. However, I have found many that are involved that lack honesty. Many have chosen to side with those that lack integrity. What side of history will you stand on? Good or bad? Right or wrong? Justice or injustice? How do we rebuild our trust? It is vital to the success of Goldsboro. It is vital to the future of all who live in Goldsboro. Today, we will be, it will be a day that will always be a reminder of what should have happened. Did we, the people of District One, fight hard against injustice? Did we all seek out the truth? Time and resources that would have been better used helping better our community were instead allocated for investigations that increased the bank accounts of some. Those resources would have better served our lower wealth communities. STEM programs, summer employment, a citizen in need. When is it ever worth fighting? When you have the fifth poorest city within the United States? Is it worth fighting? When families are working two or three jobs to make ends meet, it's worth fighting. When young men and women are being slaughtered with gun violence, it's worth the fight. When employees and elected officers think it's okay to use money that are purposed to help fight poverty for projects other than what they are intended for, I will fight. There are no winners today, just false allegations that have divided many. So many untruths, the average person doesn't know what to believe. Nobody wins when we all feud. God bless you, thank you for everybody who came and supported me. Thank you so much.
Any other comments from the council?
I just have to agree with Mr. Williams, there will be no winners in this.
Will the council either need to take action or not take action?
Mr. Mayor, I guess it's up to me. Every investigation was rendered, report was rendered to the council. And the investigation focused on Ms. Chaco Simpson Carter did bring forth instances of comments made by Mr. Williams to other members of the city staff and non-city employees that by interpretation, individual interpretation, can be seen as bullying, demeaning, and otherwise. So the point is that there are other people who received were on the end of Mr. Williams' comments and they were documented in this investigation of which the council was provided. The council was also provided exhibits supporting the investigation. And the council was also provided a summary document on the investigation. It's my belief that we cannot just ignore these actions. To do so would put us in the image of not really having any concern about protecting either the employees, fellow council members, or protecting our own liabilities or trying to ensure that we look after our own liabilities. It's a, it's a sad day for Goldsboro. It's been a sad time for Goldsboro throughout this whole process. It's brought it's brought editorials of condemnation, it's brought demeaning comments from citizens as well as people from outside this area. And it's been an embarrassment to the city. It's time for this matter to be resolved. But in my opinion, we cannot just say, well, okay, we've had the hearing, we've completed the process, let's fold our hands up, pop our hands, and walk out, take no action. So, having said that, I wanna make a motion that we censor Mr. Williams based on his violation of the City Code of Ethics 31.17 for basically conduct unbecoming city councilmen. That's a basic, that's not a quote reality.
We have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes. During your comment, you said that you saw evidence, the exhibits of the investigation. So you actually looked through those exhibits over there?
I have the exhibits that were provided, which were provided all councilmembers.
Ms. Melissa, the exhibits in that folder and the exhibits that were provided are the same, correct? Okay, but just basically doesn't have names or anything, okay? But same, same, same material? Okay, so in that material, what did you find that was any proof that Mr. Williams did anything, did any of the things that he was accused of? Because I'm just saying, for me before, for you, I didn't see anything within the first seventy-five percent of it. It's just, just a bunch of documents. So I wanna know what, what did you see that made you come to the conclusion that he needs to be censored?
I don't believe that I have a requirement to answer that.
I think Councilman Foster, even a better question for me is not what you see, but a better question for me is, wouldn't you like to have heard from the witness yourself? And you don't have to answer that, it's a rhetorical question. Would you like to have heard from the witness personally?
So, the hearing's done and so this is just councilmember comments.
I'll keep on talking.
With any other councilmember like to talk?
I ain't stopping.
Mr. Foster has the floor.
Once again, I mean, I looked through the, through the exhibits just standing there. Not one thing, not one thing within seventy-five, that first seventy-five percent of it. I mean, I just, I mean, it's terrible. If anybody get a chance, please take a look at it. I mean, it's sad that the decision would be based off that. It's sad that a lawyer came down here, took the city's money and basically ran and that's what she gave us as evidence of her investigation. It's nothing in there, you know? And, but this is how the city's gonna base that decision. So once this decision is based, this even opens the door up more for a lawsuit for Mr. Williams to the city. And we're gonna put the city at jeopardy of that. So that's something that you guys might wanna think about before you make this vote.
Any more comments? Hearing no comments, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Opposed likewise? I couldn't see more.
I got my hand up.
Okay, so it's a four to three vote, the motion fails and Councilmember Williams will not be censored. Thank you.